Welcome to the September 12, 2022, meeting of the Carver School Committee. If everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. So Scott, you're going to start with recognition.
Yep, so just as a reminder, this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Members of the public can access this meeting in person at Town Hall. They can access it via Zoom and also live on Area 58. And today, we're excited to start with some introductions of our new teachers and administrators in the County Public Schools this year. So we're happy that our staff is here, a lot of our staff's able to be here with us this evening. So at this time, I'll invite up Ruby Mastis, Principal of County Elementary School, who's going to do some introductions of some elementary staff. So welcome to Ruby.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to introduce some new folks this evening. We had a busy summer. But a very exciting summer because I always view that as an opportunity for us all, an opportunity mostly for our students. So I just wanted to share a little bit about our hiring process, too. So at the elementary school, what we typically like to do when we are hiring new folks is reach out to the grade levels or departments or areas of the school where folks will be a part of a collaborative team and see if they want to join our hiring committee. So that's typically the process. We start with first-round interviews and we typically narrow it down to two or three finalists. And then we have second-round interviews. And then we have our third-round interviews where we send two finalists to see Mr. Neef. So it's quite an extensive process. And but we feel like it's a process that is holistic and it's comprehensive. And ultimately, it really benefits our students. So I'm going to go ahead and get started with the first teacher that I'd like to introduce. And she is with us here this evening. Her name is Amanda Diatalia, and she is teaching first grade. Amanda is in the center. Welcome, Amanda. And Amanda is a graduate of Westfield State College. She has worked in early childhood for a couple of years now. She's licensed to work with grades pre-K through two children. She is also an SEI-endorsed educator. And what that means is she's received an additional, done additional coursework in sheltered English immersion. She worked in Mashpee at the Kenneth Coombe School, where she was also a STEM teacher for a year, working there as a specialist. She enjoys bringing her natural creative enthusiastic nature to teaching children. And we're excited to have her on board. So welcome, Amanda.
Thank you.
And next, we have Natalie Drago. Natalie was unable to be here tonight. She is a graduate of Bridgewater State University. She has her licensure in elementary education, grades one through six. She also has her second bachelor's degree in English. And she pursued a minor in teaching English to students of other languages. She has been a third-grade teacher. She's been a long-term substitute teacher at the Woodland Elementary School in Milford. And prior to that, she subbed quite a bit in fourth grade and fifth grade in Milford, Massachusetts. So she also worked at the Jefferson Elementary School in Rockland as a sub since 2019. So we welcome Natalie. She's teaching grade five at Carver Elementary School. And this year, she will be focusing on math and science. And she is on the team of Drago and Kelly, Drago-Kelly team. Next, we have Caroline Doosso. And Caroline is here with us tonight.
Hi.
Hey, Caroline. Caroline is working as our grade four special education teacher. She graduated from Salva Regina with a degree in elementary and special education. She has done some extensive substitute teaching in Plymouth. She taught small groups of math and literacy in North Kingston also as part of her training. She is already showing us her strengths in differentiating lessons. She's very creative. She is one of the teachers that you see when you drop off children out at drop-off. She's been very eager and excited to get to know all of the kids. And she's very resourceful, very collaborative. And we look forward to working with Caroline as our special education teacher in grade four. Next, we have Kendall Folen. Kendall is teaching first grade for us this year. She also graduated from Westfield State College. She focused on elementary education with a concentration in psychology. And she has worked as a student teacher in Chicopee. I used to live in Western Mass. And every time I think about Chicopee, I kind of want to smile a little bit just because, I don't know, brings back just memories. So anyway, the Chicopee-Holyoke Long Meadow area, right? Back in Western Mass. All right, so Kendall worked in Marshfield, and she also worked in Rehoboth. She really wanted to be closer to home, so she was hoping that she could work with us at Carver Elementary. And now she's teaching first grade. And she also has her SEI endorsement. And I probably will stop saying that probably this evening because most new educators will have their SEI endorsement. It's just by nature of what colleges are asked to do as part of their teaching preparation program for all our teachers. But basically, it means that these teachers are well-prepared to serve children that come to us with a first language other than English. So Mary Kate Healy is... Mary Kate Healy is not able to be here with us this evening, but she is a first-grade teacher as well. So we have three first-grade teachers joining our team of seven this year in grade one. So Mary Kate is a graduate of Bridgewater State University. She has her licensure in elementary education, it's grades one through six. And she really has, she focused on psychology. She did her student teaching at Chandler Elementary in Duxbury. She has been a Title I teacher for the past couple of years at Silver Lake, as well as at the Daniel Webster Elementary in Marshfield. She's also worked as an ESP, working primarily with students that have significant learning disabilities. She has some strong skills in applied behavior analysis. And she has been very eager to have a classroom of her own. So she's joining us, as I mentioned, in grade one. And next, we have Rebecca Hewitt. She was unable to be with us this evening, but she is hired as our reading specialist. Rebecca, something that I learned about her, too, just recently, is she, her first degree was from business at Northeastern. And so now she has a position as a reading specialist. She has her, an additional degree in early childhood education from Bridgewater State, as well as her master's in reading, and she's a certified reading teacher. She comes to us with experience from teaching grade one in Avon and teaching as an EL teacher in Brockton. And she also has some specialized skills teaching Orton-Gillingham. So we're excited to have her on board with us and on our reading team. Next, we have Abigail Simmons, who's with us this evening. Hi, Abby. Abby is teaching third grade for us this year. Abigail is a graduate of Bridgewater State University. She has been employed at Carver Elementary School as an ESP for the past two or three years. I might have it wrong, Abby. Two years? Okay. And she was a special education ESP in fourth grade, working alongside a special educator and a couple of the teachers to really help to differentiate instruction for our students. She has her bachelor's degree in English and special education. And she is almost, she's very close to completing her master's in elementary education from Bridgewater. And in that, in all of this time, she's been working at the elementary. She's also been getting her certification to teach students in grades one and complete her master's. So good job, Abby, and congratulations.
And we don't want to leave out that Abby is a graduate of Carver Middle High School. We have a few of our new hires, a few of our new hires are graduates of Carver Middle High School.
So next, we have Naomi Stahl. So Naomi, thank you for being here tonight. Naomi has worked in Carver since 1995, and she's served as a grade-two teacher, a grade-three teacher, and kindergarten teacher.
I'm sorry.
She has served as an inclusion teacher for a majority of those years. Therefore, she has a very strong understanding in how to support and provide instruction to children who are on IEPs. So she is a licensed early childhood educator, as well as a school guidance counselor for grades K through eight. She also has her doctoral degree in educational leadership. She is a wealth of knowledge. She has been wonderful on our team already. We're very excited for her to continue to work with us on our leadership team. And I know her kindergarten team really misses her, but overall, big picture, we all need her very much. And we are glad to have her on board. Next, we have Rebecca Vess. Rebecca Vess is hired as a district BCBA, so it's a board-certified behavior analysis. And she was analyst, I'm sorry. She was not able to be with us tonight. But Rebecca Vess is, she has taught special education actually for probably about 12 or 13 years in Arizona and Florida and Wareham. So she has experience in classrooms ranging from pre-K through the middle-school grades. She has lots of experience with conducting functional behavior assessments in the school settings, as well as writing behavior plans. She really enjoys focusing on social-emotional learning and helping students to become more and more independent so that they can access instruction that best fits their needs. So we're excited to have Rebecca. She works at the elementary three days a week and at the middle-high school two days a week. And so we share her that way. So that's our team.
Ruby, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone.
Welcome. So exciting.
And as I like to welcome Christine Cabral, principal, interim principal of Carver Middle High School, to introduce our new staff from the middle-high school.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. So we, the list at the Carver Middle High School is short and sweet. We don't have nearly, nearly the addition to staff that Ruby has at the elementary school. But we, and unfortunately, most of them were not able to join us here tonight. But we did hire Ben Chaffin, who is a high school math teacher. And very proud to say he is also doing an outstanding job coaching our high school football team. And our new staff really has jumped in. We've also hired Nathan Miller as a long-term substitute for eighth and ninth-grade math for this year. And Nathan also has, he's a former graduate of Carver Middle High School. And he's also jumped in. He's applied and been accepted to do the assistant director of the drama club at the high school level.
Excellent.
We have Flora Rosenfield, who is here with us this evening. We were very fortunate to convince Flora to come out of retirement, that she's not actually a retired French teacher. She is really happy to be here with us at Carver Middle High School. And she's very talented. She's, she's excited to offer art classes or perhaps line dancing during our wind block. She's very creative. She loves students. She's very involved with the kids. So we're really excited to have her with us here. We have Megan Costa, who is also a former graduate of Carver Middle High School. Scott was her history teacher when she was student. But she's been hired as a special education teacher, and she's going to work and support students in the Delta Program. And we've also hired Angela Patton, who is not a stranger to us either. She's served for years as an ESP, working in the path, well, was the Pathways Program. We now refer to it as the Step Up Program. But Angela has been certified in special education, and she's come back to lead that program for us. And I'm proud to have with me here tonight Mr. Sean McGinnis, who is our new high school assistant principal. And I'll allow Sean to just say hello and introduce himself.
Evening, everybody. Thanks for having me here tonight with the rest of the team. I'm Sean McGinnis. I've come over from Norwell High School, where I was the athletic director, and also filled in as the assistant principal at the middle school. And before that, I was at Triton High School as both the athletic director and did roles as the assistant principal at the high school. It's been a fantastic time here. I've been able to put my past as both athletic director, working with students, my MBA from Norwich University, all the work within the last couple of weeks. And the students have been fantastic. It's been unbelievable. The culture there at the high school has been awesome. It's been great to see our students out and about and very supportive of each other and going along with a lot of the changes that they've had this year. Not only when they see new faces, they've had a new schedule, they've had a wind block, they've had a lot of changes, but they've been great. And the staff has been just simply amazing with how they've rolled with it. Our staff meeting was tremendous today. I think we got a lot of feedback, a lot of input throughout the day. So I think it's just been an awesome start to the school year. So I appreciate you guys having me here.
Awesome. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
So today, at the faculty meetings at both the middle-high school and the elementary school, we've recognized staff for years of service within the district, for the 20 years, 25 years, 30, and then individually for people who had above 30 years of experience. And hopefully, for all of our new staff here, though Naomi's been with us for a while, just changing roles, hopefully, for all of our new staff here, this is the beginning of a career in Carver because it's a great place to work. And hopefully, 25 years from now, they might have some foggy memory of being introduced to the school community when they were first hired. And we're excited to have everybody here. It's an outstanding group of teachers who are really, early on, have shown their dedication to the community. And we're hoping they're going to be here for a long time. So congratulations, everybody. Thanks for being here this evening.
Yes, thank you for coming. Welcome.
Everyone's more than welcome to stay, but no one will, also, no one will be offended if you make a decision to not stay. So that, that was your invitation to go home. I'll try to skip you, but everybody's more than welcome to stay.
We know you all had a very busy day today. Welcome to Carver.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for being here.
Welcome.
Right? Yeah, new beginnings, right? Super excited. So it looks like we have Tom Pinto here for comments from the EAPC.
Tom, I just made you a co-host, so you should be able to... Turn your media on. There you go.
There he is.
Tom, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Tom.
It's very quiet.
Wait, do you hear that?
Yep, there he is.
Let's go get a little feedback. I was going to say congratulations to new staff, but I'm assuming they left. I know, I know it was an eight to a 10 opening day. And I hope everybody, the whole school community, had a great summer. I know it was a hot one. And it was very fast. This summer, I felt like Carver got back to its normalcy. Could spend a lot more time with my family. Spend many afternoons swimming in the pool. So I feel like it's a good start to a great school year. And I wish everyone a wonderful school year. Look forward to working with you as always. That's it. Have a great night, everyone.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, and that brings us to comments from the general public. So if there's anyone in the room that would like to speak, now is the time for you to approach the table. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. And then if there's anyone that is on Zoom that would like to speak, if you could please put your name in the chat so you can be recognized, that would be great. So again, if you're on Zoom and if you'd like to speak, just please put your name in the chat. And it doesn't look like we have anyone that's in the room that is here to speak. So we only have four people in the chat. So I haven't seen any activity, have you? Okay. So all right, so we will move on to the approval of minutes from the August 16, 2002, open session.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 16 open session.
I will second.
We have a motion, the second is, don't need discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And that brings us to some very exciting communications. Just going to continue with all the positivity.
Yeah, so we're very excited to announce that, we were actually notified just last night that we have been identified through Special Olympics. The middle-high school is a national banner Unified Champion School. And the official announcement was actually made public throughout the country this afternoon and this morning at nine o'clock, so we can begin to share the news. I do have a couple of slides of our unified teams from last year.
Great.
Just obviously something we put quickly together today. And we'll be doing a lot more publication about this and really promoting how exciting this really is. So while we bring the first picture up, let me talk a little bit about what it means to be a national bannerified Unified Champion School. I'll actually read right from the letter that was sent from us today, which is, "Congratulations, on behalf of the Special Olympics International, we are honored to declare Carver Middle High School an official Special Olympics National Banner Unified Champion School. Under your leadership, the Carver Middle High School staff and students have demonstrated their commitment to inclusion. Your school community has shown impressive determination and is helping us move towards our collective goal of creating a truly unified generation of young people who embrace differences and lead social change. You are literally redefining the future as you make your communities more inclusive of people with intellectual disabilities and in doing so, making the world a more accepting place for all." Just as a little bit more about what it means to be a national school. Ultimately, you know, in the email received, it says, "Your school has successfully achieved national standards of excellence in the areas of inclusion, advocacy, and respect. The athletes, partners, students, coaches, volunteers, teacher staff, and administration at Carver Middle High School have all played key roles in creating a social climate where everyone feels included and respected for who they are." So in receiving this recognition, we're only one of 12 schools within the state of Massachusetts and only one of 164 schools nationwide to receive this recognition. Now, we received this four years ago as well. And we actually did a pep rally for our unified teams. Haven't talked about that in a while yet, because it's all just happened. I'm looking at Christine. We did a unified teams pep rally and excitement. And so we'll definitely, as I said, we just found this out officially last night. Lot more information to come on this, and we'll be doing the celebration. You know, really, we really have been a pioneer in unified sports. So we had, Carver Middle High School had some of the first unified teams in the region. I, we have to credit Mike Schultz in the athletic department. And at that time, I was the principal and he was the AD. And he really took the leadership in bringing the first unified teams to Carver. And the program has just grown. So last year, Carver Middle High School unified teams participated in a variety of sports, including soccer, basketball, bocce, track and field. They also had a jersey raffle fundraiser to raise money for one of our athletes that's currently fighting cancer. Ultimately, our teams are always striving to be inclusive, competitive, and resilient. And then, like I said, we just have a couple pictures of our unified team. This is our unified basketball team. Another picture of our unified basketball team. This is our unified soccer team. And our unified track and field team. You know, so we've really had a tremendous amount of participation from both our model students and our special needs students. And our Best Buddies program has been really strong. And Best Buddies has helped build the unified programs. And like I said, it's just been tremendous, the work that's happened in this area. And the programming we offer just continues to grow. And I think it's a, it's really an outstanding recognition that we're, that we've received from Special Olympics International. And we look forward to continuing to celebrate our unified teams.
Awesome.
Absolutely. Congratulations. That's great. Right? And that brings us right to reports from the superintendent.
All right, so we'll go into personnel updates. So since the last time we met, we have had several new hires because we've been continuing to finalize our staff for this year. Some of them we met here this evening. So since the last time we met, new hires. Jessica Scalfoni is an ESP in special education at the elementary school. Amanda Diatalia as a grade-one teacher at the elementary school. Brian Panario as a lunch monitor at the elementary school. Kristen Freeman as a lunch monitor at the elementary school. Diane Russo is an ESP in special education at the middle-high school. Corey Billings in food service at the elementary school. Vanessa Caquinos in food service at the middle-high school. Jessica Fryberg at food service at the middle-high school. Jessica Andis is ESP math interventionist at the elementary school. Megan Costa is a special education teacher at Carver Middle High School. Kathleen Darney is an ESP in special education at the middle-high school. Jay Lindsay is an ESP for pre-K at the elementary school. Angela Patton, special education teacher at the middle-high school. Flora Rosenfield, French teacher at Carver Middle High School. Jamie Bottom as a CDL driver. And Amanda Vesta as an ESP special ed at the elementary school. We've also had a few resignations. Bruce Savage is a custodian at the elementary school. Jamie Wild is an ESP in special education at Carver Middle High School. Lisa Villar is an ESP in special education at the elementary school. Anne Marie Gallagher is a special education teacher at Carver Middle High School. And Janine Marwa as a food service worker at the middle-high school. So that is all of our personnel updates since the last time we met. And I know the last couple of times we've met, that's been a big list. We're beginning to solidify and fill all our staff. And I think it will be, I'm sure it will be a much smaller list when we meet on October 3 for our personnel updates.
Great. Thank you.
Might we just continue down?
Yes.
So going into our fall sports overview, we're excited to have Athletic Director Phyllis Bowie and Assistant Athletic Director Zach LeBlank here with us this evening. So Phyllis and Zach, if you guys can come on up. Thank you for being here to tell us a little bit about what's happening in fall sports this year.
Yes, thank you both for taking the time to come this evening. We appreciate hearing about what our athletes are up to out there on the field. So thank you.
Great. So we have some great news to share, share with everybody tonight. I first want to say thank you to school committee members for allowing us to have this time to share some information about fall sports. For anybody that doesn't know me, I'm Phyllis Bowie, Athletic Director at Carver Middle High School. And I just wanted to take a few minutes tonight just to share some highlights. We're early in the fall season, but I just want to be able to give you some highlights that we've had so far moving forward. I would first like to introduce Zach LeBlank. Zach is the new assistant AD, working with myself and Phil Mador, who's our athletic trainer. Zach began teaching at the elementary school in 2019 as a fourth-grade teacher. And he then headed over to the middle-high school to run the Delta Program. At that time, he became involved in our unified sports classes and also took the position of the JV baseball coach in the spring for the high school. Zach felt that when the position of assistant AD was posted, that it was the perfect opportunity for him to get more involved in athletics. And so I look forward to working with Zach this school year as we have already had a very busy start to the fall season so far. And we're just about, we're a little over two weeks in. I would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank you our groundskeepers, Jim Carrier and Nick Jones, for all of their hard work throughout the year. The stadium, the turf field, and the grass fields, honestly, they always look impeccable. And I always feel a sense of pride, especially when we're hosting other teams coming to our school because we do get a lot of compliments on the grounds itself. And I also like to acknowledge and thank you our custodians in the middle-high school because they, they are always there if I need them, especially during the winter when most of our sports are inside. They're always there to lend a helping hand. So I just want to be able to give them the acknowledgement and a shout-out for all that they do for athletics. So this fall, we have had over 200 participants that have registered. So this fall, we have had over two hundred participants that have registered for all of our sports. The sports that we do offer are JV and varsity football, JV and varsity field hockey, JV and varsity volleyball, varsity girls soccer, JV boy soccer, we have boys and girls cross-country, we have cheerleading, we have varsity golf, and we also have esports. Just to go over a little review of the sports, we do have some new coaching staff. So for football, the head coach is Ben Chufain, who was mentioned as also a new teacher at the middle high school. So he joins our staff in athletics as the head coach. His staff includes Patrick Keneely, Mike Pont, Gary Willis, Ray Tolliver, and Zach Jones. For volleyball, we have our varsity coach, Morgan Bardetti, and our JV coach is Brooke Bishop. For girls soccer, we have varsity coach Jen Wilson and assistant JV coach Nikki Tully. For boy soccer, for the middle school, middle school program, the head coach is Mark Showen, and his assistant is Shane Crelin. For golf, we have our varsity head coach, Tony Roder, and his assistant is Brendan Cully. Cross-country, with the former coach Fracalossi's retirement in June, who ran the, the program for quite a while. We have our veteran coach, Sean Carey, has taken over the role as the head coach for cross-country, boys and girls cross-country. For JV and varsity field hockey, we have Renee Grinnell, who's our head coach, and we have Rihanna Kenyon, who is our JV coach. For cheerleading this year, we also welcome a new head coach, Mackenzie Arigal. And she is assisted by her sister Kendall Arigal. Esports head coaches are David Aruda and Matt Cartmel. They begin their second year coaching our newest sport, which is offered in the fall and the spring. The fall season began on August nineteenth for football, cheerleading, and golf, while soccer, field hockey, cross-country, and volleyball and esports began on August twenty-second. We started the season with some scrimmages and have now officially started our fall season with games and matches. Some wins, some losses, but the student body and community have been great, already filling our stadium and gym, showing us that school spirit is present each time. You can find our sports schedule on our school website by choosing the athletic link. You can also go to Arbiter Live and search for Carver Middle High School. And you can also follow us on Twitter at Carver Crusaders. The athletic staff, administration, coaches, student athletes, and parents are all looking forward to a great fall season and hope that you all continue to come out and support your Carver Crusaders throughout the year.
So, it wa- it was great to see Friday night, we had a great turnout for the first whole football game. It was really a huge community event, so that was nice to see. So, as a sign of coming out of COVID times. And the other thing I've been impressed with so far for the games I've been able to attend, which is just a few, is I think there's been a little bit of a focus through the administration at the middle high school, through the athletic department, of getting the teams to really support each other. So they're making a push to, okay, after football practice, we want all the football players to come over and watch the girls soccer game. So this evening, I was at the girls soccer game, I didn't stay till the end, hopefully they won, did they hold on?
They did, they did.
They did.
Sophia was a ball girl, and all the football players came over and they were screaming for them.
After practice was over, the, I don't know if every football player came over, but a lot of football players came over to watch the girls team. And there's been a lot of discussion about, let's make sure we're all supporting all of our student athletes. I know I wasn't there the other night, but there was a great turnout for the volleyball game.
Yes, we had quite a cheering section.
I know Mrs. Cabral was there, and Mrs. Bowie, Mr. LeBlanc, I'm not sure if you were there, Doc, Mrs. McGinnis was there. So there's been, you know, so there's been a real focus on working with the kids to say, you know, we're, we're the Carver Crusaders, we're all, we're all in this together, and we're going to work together to support each other. With a real emphasis with going to the coaches and saying, hey, we want you after practice to say to your team, go support this team. Or, let's, if there's a game at night, let's make sure we all try to get there, so that everyone gets to everybody else's games. Now, obviously, you know, football's still what brings in the largest crowd, so it was nice to see that nice turnout Friday night. But I've been impressed early on, just here in the first couple of weeks, of the amount of support and excitement that the kids have been generating for each other, which is really, which is really important. So Phyllis, thank you to, to you for your work on that, and to Mrs. Cabral, to Mrs. McGinnis, in terms of the administration supporting and advocating, and then, and the kids are excited about doing it. You know, that's, that's a good thing, and that's what we want to do. We want, want everyone to be excited about all of our programs, all of our teams, and encouraging our students. So, early on, in terms of being at games, I've seen nothing but, the games I've been able to be at, I've seen nothing but good competitiveness, good attitudes, positive approach. And it's just been a positive atmosphere at those games.
And honestly, it's been a great thing to see. Like I said, we're really only starting our third, third week of real events, and just to see the school spirit already building in the stadium and in the gym is really encouraging, and it just, you can feel the excitement at school. So, it's really a great thing to have and to, and to see every day. So, again, thank you for this opportunity for letting us share some information, and I'm sure we'll see you again soon.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
I just have one question. So was there not enough interest with middle, high schooler girls to play, to create a JV team, or how does that work for some?
So initially, we, we did think that we were going to have a JV team. But unfortunately, what sometimes happens is, sometimes students, they'll, they'll commit in the spring. Because I usually encourage coaches to have a meeting in the spring if they have a fall sport, to get an idea of, you know, how many students are actually looking to play that particular sport, to get some information, to have coaches kind of talk to them through the summer and encourage them and remind them. But unfortunately, sometimes it doesn't always work out that way. By the time the fall comes, they either have other commitments, they might try the sport, they don't really care for the sport, especially the, the younger, middle school, boys and girls.
They might change their mind and decide to play a different sport.
And they changed their mind, yes, we had a lot, tried a sport in the fall, didn't like it, but went to another sport in the fall, which is great because they're still doing something. But, you know, we didn't really find out until the season started that we would not have enough to fill the JV team.
Yeah, and well, it sounds like a good prospect that you have the JV boy soccer to maybe hopefully build up the varsity team.
That, that is our goal, is to, is to build the boy soccer.
In terms of girls soccer, our final number is twenty-two or twenty?
We just had, yeah, it's.
Twenty-two or twenty-one, which is unfortunate, it's close, you know, to have two full teams. But really, you're right on the line.
Of not having any subs.
Yeah, both having two teams with no subs, no opportunities, well, not opportunities for people to get hurt, it's not an opportunity to get hurt. But if someone gets hurt or injured or sick, or if you miss a one play, you don't have enough in the whole team.
Yeah.
So, but the good, my reason I mention that though, in terms of there is a good number of younger players playing, so hopefully we'll be able to build up, be able to have two teams next year.
Yeah, the varsity girls played awesome, very competitive. It was, you know, you could see the enthusiasm, like you said, with the, the football players coming over, and the kids talking to each other on the field, their coaches are amazing, so it was fun to watch.
Awesome, it was, fun game.
It's, yeah, it's been very good. The football game the other night was amazing, as you mentioned, the excitement is palpable. And I think, Zach, did you do the commentary?
I did not.
Whoever did the commentary the other night was amazing, and we wanted to. Adam did it?
Yeah.
Oh, it was, it was awesome, like, I just, just the energy level and the attitude of the kids too. You see a huge difference this year in comparison to last year, so I really appreciate everybody's efforts. It was fun, it was a fun night. I brought my little over there, and I, I have to give a shout out to Mackenzie. My daughter is doing youth cheer right now with some former Carver High students that have just rebuilt the program. And Mackenzie did a great job too. I, I got to see some things with the high school cheerleaders that we haven't seen in a few years, so it's great.
That was also very nice. Very good. Very supportive for our football team, and they really displayed that on Friday night.
And I think, when I, and I know it's going to happen, but I'd love to see more interaction with the youth in the high school kids, because, oh, it's, it's wild, those little ones were so excited to see them, so I'm very happy.
It's important to have that bridge.
Yeah, Nikki invited the Carver U soccer girls to become the ball girls, so that was fun.
Yeah, it's nice to see that we can do that again, too. Absolutely, thank you so much for coming. Thank you for having us.
Thank you so very much.
I thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, at this time, we're excited to welcome Candy Stansfield, our elementary art teacher, who's going to do an overview of the elementary art curriculum. Now, just as I can, Candy, if you'd just give me a half a second.
Sure.
You know, over the past year, we've kind of were looking at the. Ruby's going to join Candy as well. Over the past year, we've been looking at the different curriculum areas throughout the school district. Though, the one place we had in focus is the Allied Arts at the elementary school. So our goal is to have an Allied Arts presentation for each of the meetings up, I think, through December. And Candy's leading that off, with the Allied Arts teachers at the elementary school. Yeah, I'm going to talk about the elementary curriculum, and Candy, I'll do my best to move the slides along at the right time.
Well, thank you for having me this evening to talk about the art curriculum. And first off, the art curriculum is customized through the exploration of art by Davis Publications. And the framework is structured to build students' artistic literacy and provides opportunities for all students to create original work aligned to the artist's intent, present artistic works in an annual art exhibit in the spring, respond to the structure and context of artistic works, and make connections about the impact of the arts on oneself, history, and culture. In grades three through five, our focus is extending their knowledge of the elements of design and introduction of the principles of design. It also infuses art history in the works of past and current professional artists. And in the last year, we have focused on STEAM-related lessons. They're planned around experiential learning, collaboration, thoughtful risk-taking, and provides many opportunities to work through the creative process. So, in this project here called Forms in Buildings, Building Models, students were required to come up with a, an idea for a building and a purpose for its building. And the building could be anywhere, underwater, on the moon, in the desert. And they had to design the outside and also the landscape around the house. So we started planning, as architects do, with drawing on paper and pencil. And some students, like this person here, decided to also design the layout of the inside of the building. So after they designed on paper their design of the building, they moved to practicing, building the forms in a three-dimensional way with scrap paper. So these kids practiced forms like spheres and cubes, tried to make rectangular prisms in making their buildings. So this slide here is all about their prototypes in trying to make the cube with paper. After their prototypes were created, and they learned how to make the cube, the sphere, the cylinder, the cone, they moved to colored paper using colored construction paper and crayons, colored pencils, oil pastels. They created the outside of the building using various forms.
What grade level was this?
This was grades two and three.
Oh, wow, those are really.
Yeah, they are really, they're great.
Some of these kids added, you know, names for their buildings, and they definitely had purposes for their creations. We have Carver High School up top on the right. And a school now hiring. That's sort of a reflection of our culture and the times, now hiring.
That's awesome.
Those kids don't look like me.
Right. For our grades K to two, the art curriculum focuses on introduction to the elements of design, explores various mediums. The focus is on the process of making art, not the end product. Students are encouraged to self-express their own ideas and incorporate them into their own art. So here we have, we read the book, The Very Hungry Caterpillar, and students created their own leaves and used watercolor paints to color, paint their leaves and form their caterpillars with clay, and then painted them with watercolor paints.
Does that go too fast?
It's okay. And here we have a collage, two collages. One is with shapes, wooden shapes, where they glue together to make different pictures. So this little person created themselves and their friend. And then on the other side, we have a collage of sunflowers. And we read the story about Vincent Van Gogh and his famous sunflowers. And then they created this collage of sunflowers. Printing with found objects, this was fun. We use all kinds of things like Q-tips and doilies and paper doilies, forks in strawberry baskets, and all these different things that you, you would find, you know, maybe in your kitchen or in your bathroom to print and make art with.
Recycle, Ken.
Recycle, yes. Here's some more of very hungry caterpillars and a spring painted paper collage. We painted paper, warm colors and cool colors. And then we cut them all up and made gardens. And some kids wanted to grow vegetables, and others wanted to grow flowers, and they added, you know, ground lines, skies, some added insects, little people.
Is that the last one?
I believe so.
Alright, thank you Candy for kind of giving us an overall, to give us an overview of all the great things that are happening right at the elementary school.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Yes, thank you very much, they were fantastic. Makes me want to go do art.
It doesn't?
Mine wouldn't be that good, but you know. Alright, so that brings us to the elementary literacy update from Dr. Meredith Erickson.
Before I do that, I just want to compliment Mrs. Stansfield. She mentioned early on that her curriculum has been adjusted to meet the new arts curriculum. And the new frameworks were released during COVID. So in addition to trying to figure out how to teach art with social distancing and masks, with hand sanitizer, with all of these, you know, new configurations, she also worked on implementing this new updated curriculum that had not been updated in years. So I just want to say how much we appreciate her influence for our students, so thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
So we had promised that we would give you periodic updates on the implementation of our new reading program. So I don't have a slideshow, I just thought I would give you a quick update about what has happened between when we last spoke in June and now. So, these are exciting times, and over the summer, there was a lot of work that, that we took on, starting first and foremost with our administrative team and Kate being involved in some training on how to lead this shift to this type of reading paradigm. And then we were able to get in our units of study phonics program, and we delivered those to teachers' desks in July. And Ruby sent out communications, so anyone that wanted to come in and grab those for some light summer reading were able to do so. And Kate Moore, really based on some feedback that we had received from teachers during our Bridges implementation, she had worked with two teachers who have lots of experience with units of study phonics, and they came in for involuntary training at the end of August. That was highly attended by our K through two teachers. And those two teachers came in and gave some tips and tricks on how to just get started. And they brought so much energy and enthusiasm that the excitement was palpable. And then during our first two days back, one of the days was dedicated to the implementation of units of study phonics and the workshop models. So we started with our. So, we started with our staff developer that we're going to be working with over the course of the next year or so. And she was able to work not only with all teachers in grades K through two and our third grade English Language Arts teachers, but she also gave us time to work in those small groups and unpack the units of study and look at the daily mini lessons. We've also been busy with ordering materials. So, we placed an order for a bunch of decodables, which is super important to support the program for our earliest readers. And those are called jump rope readers. And then we were able to procure with Ron's help and with Ruby's grant writing skills, 7,000 new titles, so that we have a leveled book room that's being unpacked right now. And that, yes, it's awesome.
That is awesome. Thank you.
And the, the nice experience with that is our reading team has been amazing for the start of the school year. They've taken the books that we've had. They've made sure to level them as well and luxile them. And we cleaned out some dedicated space, so we're in the process of unpacking those right now. And the sets of the books that we received, there's between six and 12 titles, or excuse me, between six and 12 copies per title, so that teachers can check them out and run small groups or run pairs of readers that can sit and make sense and talk about that. And then lastly, we're very excited. In both September and in October, each of those grade level teams will receive a half day of intensive training by our staff developer, who will come in and do a model lesson and do kind of a pre-model lesson to talk about how she planned and how our teachers can plan as well. And then a debrief about what they saw. And that will be followed up with individual coaching opportunities for each teacher with Kate, who is also getting training on how to support this rollout. So, it's truly energetic and exciting and exhausting at the same time. But it's only because we care so much and everyone's working very hard. And to share a little bit about what our students are going to be experiencing, aside from the structured phonics, in reading in K through two over the next couple of months, these are the major topics that they're going to be covering is reading to learn about the world, reading favorite storybooks. And then in first grade, good readers have good habits, using good habits before, during, and after reading, and good habits for making sense of books, so that we're really building in that comprehension to ride alongside the decoding and the phonics. And then in second grade, reading with fluency, reading series, and really looking for character development throughout different books in a series. And then flexible word solving, so making sure that those word attack skills are going to help our students with comprehension and fluency.
Excellent.
That's awesome.
Yes, thank you, Meredith. Oh, absolutely.
I'm just curious if there's been, I know it's very early in the school year, but even with the early training, maybe at the staff meeting or whatever, is there any early feedback from any teachers so far? What, how are people feeling about it? Because it's, it was a big change.
Yeah, so I think that overall, positive feedback, I think that that's coupled with a healthy amount of productive struggle, which you would experience anytime you learn something new. So, if teachers were like, this is great, I have no questions, then we would be worried.
Right.
So, we're anticipating that. We planned for that. And the elementary administrative team, so Dr. Stahl, Dr. Penella, and Principal Myosis have been amazing at just making themselves available to teachers. And I feel like we've done a lot of meeting with lead teachers, meeting with grade level teams, and being able to respond to questions. But people are grinning. And so, even though the work is hard, I think there's a general feeling of buoyancy and excitement. And it's a lot, like I will say, that there's preparation, there's lots of prep materials, there's a lot of putting things into the black baggies. And grouping lots of amazing books together, but the exciting thing is getting books in the hands of readers and watching them grow and light up.
Yes, and reading is probably one of the single most important things that happens in elementary school, right? Because you start with non-readers and you get them to be hopefully very, very fluent readers before they're ready to head to middle high school. So, this, we knew this was going to be a huge undertaking. Thank you, all of you, for all that you're doing to implement this, because our kids deserve a good reading program. And thank you to the teachers for all their work in learning and implementing it.
They've been amazing so far.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much. We look forward to your next update. All right, and that brings us to upcoming events.
Yep, just want to share with the community of the communities some events that we have coming up for September and October.
Good night.
So, obviously, this goes back to the beginning of school, but we do have some senior events coming up. The Senior Dinner Dance on.
Already?
You may not remember that. We actually did that as a change a couple of years ago. The Senior Dinner Dance used to be the week of graduation. About, maybe three years ago now, maybe even four years ago, we shifted it to almost make it a kickoff event for the seniors. So, the concept is try to bring the senior class together. They have the Senior Dinner Dance to kick it off, and it's followed very shortly after the Senior Deck Boat Trip. So, those two events kind of parallel together, kind of start off the year. We have Elementary Pitcher Day coming up. We have Middle School Pitcher Day coming up. And then we have Camp Bourndale, which has shifted to the fall with sixth and seventh grade, which I think people are aware of, coming up in October. We've selected the day of the Homecoming Football Game, which is going to be October 21st. On the Homecoming Football, Homecoming, that's not a football dance, Homecoming Dance on October 22nd. And then we have PSATs in the building for juniors, so I'd be inviting junior class to take part in that. And SATs in the building for seniors. And you know, that's been a little bit of a change since COVID that we haven't talked about a lot, is they've gone to allow you to offer those exams during the school day. Have the opportunities for students to take those exams during the school day. So, we have those events coming up. And then, you know, I'm not going to read everything to you on the list. We just like to show it to the community, just show it's up there. Let's keep, finish it off with the elementary PTO trunk or treat on October 28th. Before we know it, Halloween will be there. So, obviously, just want to give the school community some events coming up over the next couple of months as we move forward in the year.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And just to highlight that this week, this Thursday, is the open house.
At the middle high school.
So, I know it was in the welcome letter, but I don't know that there's been any other direct email communication from administration. I think some of the teams and the grade levels have emailed, but not all. And I've seen some rumblings, heard some rumblings about people going, is there really open house this week? Did I know about this? So, I don't know if maybe another communication could go out.
I will ask Mrs. Cabral to send something out.
Letter's going out first thing tomorrow morning.
Oh, you read my mind. Thank you.
It's all set. I have my editors previewing it this evening, and it's hitting the press tomorrow morning.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As a, I'll mention this, because this was actually mentioned to, this was mentioned to me earlier today. I know that there's been, I know that there's been some communication out there. And we had some members of the community who were directing people back to the website. So, part of our communication strategy is to direct people back to the website, because all the information you want, well, the things that are happening in the school are on the website. So, we encourage people to go to the website to see it.
Yes, and there was a nice little calendar, summary calendar, right on the main page.
It's right there. That's why we want people to go and look and use the website. If you have a question and say, is this event happening? If you go back to the website and look at the calendar, you'll see if that event is happening. And that's part of what we're trying to do in terms of that communication and marketing piece, which we're just starting. We're in the infancy of, of how we're going to build that out to better communicate and market to the community the things that are going on.
Are there teacher conferences scheduled for the elementary school?
Yes.
Okay.
So, this is just through October. I think they're separate. And we separate those days, so that they're not the same time.
Yeah, I mean, oddly, like after the second semester last year, third through fifth grade had optional conferences. And I thought that was.
Yes, because what they did is third to fifth grade did two conferences in the fall. So, the teachers are only required to do two nights of conferences. Third to fifth grade did two nights because of their team approach, to try to have all the teachers be able to be, see all the parents, be able to see both members of the team. So, that was the reason why three through five did not have a conference in the spring last year.
Yeah. I recall two conferences in the fall, but.
Yeah, you were like, I went to one of them. But there were, there were.
Either way, I mean, I was checking in. I just didn't know the reason why they hadn't scheduled the teacher conferences for the second semester.
And this year, I believe, we're going back to doing one conference in each spring and fall.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
All right, really quickly, I just want to say thank you to Gina for that nice little snapshot calendar that is on the website. It is extremely helpful, so I appreciate your efforts in bringing that forward.
Yeah, and I like that there was a calendar, too, that showed when all of the sports events are. So, you could go there and you could see, oh, here's the field hockey and here's when the cross-country meet is and here, you know.
And obviously, that's, you know, that's more subject to change based on what's happening in terms of weather and all those types of things. But the goal is to try to keep that as up to date as, as possible.
Yeah, but it was nice to have it all in one place. You didn't have to really go searching for it, because, you know, to try to get more community involvement, it's nice to have it there, so that's, it's great.
I believe it even includes like the rotation at the middle high school, what day it is and all that, all that kind of information.
Yep, it's looking great. Thank you, Gina.
It's a good improvement.
Absolutely. So, that brings us to recommendations from the superintendent, including review of the educational blueprint. Very exciting.
Pulling it up here. So, I know we actually have several, a couple of members of the committee who are fairly new. So, I wanted to give you just a brief background on where the educational blueprint came from. How did it come into being? So, when I became superintendent, I actually participated in the, it was a three-year superintendent's induction program that the state runs for all new superintendents. So, all new superintendents in Massachusetts offered to join this program. And I'm already, I'm already on a tangent. I said, I'm not going to go on a tangent. I'm already on a tangent. But, you know, part of that program was, is that they found that, one of the reasons they did that program is that there was, became a huge churn rate in superintendents, and superintendents were turning over quickly. So, they wanted to put some state structures in support of superintendents, so they could maybe have a little more longevity within the communities that they were in. And one of the focuses of that work was for superintendents to take, one of their strong recommendations was to take what many districts have, what they call a district improvement plan, and kind of make it a one-page document. And I will say, I inherited a district improvement plan that was 40, 50 pages long. And it wasn't really a district improvement plan. It was a list of everything, everything that happens in the district. It may, it could have been 100 pages long. It was legitimately 40 or something. And they said, you know, if you have a document that's 40 pages long, no one's going to look at that document. So, they said, you should try to take your concept of things you want to do in your district, get down to some key objectives, three or four key objectives, and be able to make it a one pager, make it a one-page document that people can look at and maybe hold on to and understand a little bit. So, that, that process took my, took those couple of years of my new, new role as superintendent, which was back now six years ago. Probably two years in, at the end of the first two years, we came up with this concept of transitioning our district improvement plan to this document called the educational blueprint. And the concept is that this would establish your goals for a long period of time. You know, the estimate of three to five years, that was the goal. And so, that was four years ago. And a couple of years ago, I went through a process where we put that, we looked at the core objectives and said, do we want to maintain these core objectives on, on the blueprint? And the decision was to maintain them. But the initiatives that support the core objectives may change. So, tonight, I'm bringing forward to you, the core objectives are the same, the core values are the same, the vision statement's the same. And really, these core objectives are saying, this is what we want to be about as a school. We want to support safe schools and all the things that go along with that, from social emotional safety and wellbeing to physical safety and wellbeing. We want to better engage the community. And obviously, that's been a little bit of a focus, saying, we need to do a better job engaging the community of Carver and getting everybody involved in the great things that are happening at Carver Middle High School. We want to enhance teaching and learning. Obviously, we always want to be improving what we're doing as educators and giving the best opportunities to our students. And the last one was leverage leadership policy and funding. Saying ultimately, as a school district, there are limited resources within the community of Carver, and it's our responsibility to best manage those resources to support our students. And so, we've kind of established, those are like our four core bedrock goals. Support safe schools, engage with the community, enhance teaching and learning, leverage leadership policy and funding. With all those things cultivating kind of this tagline of cultivating empowered learning and responsible citizenship. So, none of those pieces of this document have changed. What has changed a little bit is the initiatives. And you'll see as I go through some of the changes in the initiatives, they're in alignment with things that we've, they're actually in alignment directly in line as they should be with the school improvement plans. So, some of this language comes directly from the school improvement plans. Some of it is kind of a combination of a similar thought or theme that may have been in the elementary and the middle high school plan that we kind of put together as a district plan. And I also think you're going to see that many of the initiatives are in align and supportive of, I know some of the goals the school committee are beginning to talk about. You know, so we are in the process of, or you're in the process of developing goals as a school committee for the school district and for the community. And I think you'll see a lot of the themes that we've talked about in that process represented here as well, which is really the way it should be. You know, the district improvement plan or the educational blueprint should be aligned with the school committee goals. It should be aligned with the school improvement goals. So, it all, it's all streaming and pushing in the same direction. That's kind of the goal. That's the purpose of the document. I'm bringing it here tonight for your approval, because if, if we get the school committee's approval for the document tonight, what I'll do, which we had done, which we had done in the past, and in every classroom, this document will hang. We'll bring it to every classroom in the building, so people can see it, reference it, talk about it, think about it. And maybe, maybe they don't think specifically about a specific initiative on here, but maybe they can think, what am I doing in my role and my job to support a safe school environment? What am I doing to engage the community as a whole? How, in my role as a member of the Carver Public Schools, whether it's a teacher or an ESP, or a bus driver, or an administrator, how am I doing these things? So, we want this document to live in our buildings. So, as I said, if this, if the changes and the initiatives are approved this evening, we'll go forward and we'll, we'll create, we'll print this document up into a one-page kind of cardstock, hanging it in every classroom in the building, hanging it in all of our offices, and hopefully have it be driving the decisions we're making as a school district. So, some of the changes I'll highlight, I'm not going to read everything that's here, but I will highlight some of the changes. So, under support safe schools, trying to make this a little bigger for the audience, I mean, the people at home. Collaborate with Carver Public Safety to maintain ALICE procedures. So, that is one of our initiatives. And obviously, that one's been ongoing. That's not necessarily new. But I did want to highlight for the community as a whole that we actually had some trainings over the summer with the Carver Police, with Carver Fire, specifically talking about implementing some of our ALICE procedures and protocols. We did a tabletop exercise with the Carver Police and the Carver Fire on how we would respond in a crisis situation. And also, the police did some training at the elementary school in terms of how they would respond in that building. Sorry, I said the elementary school, at the middle high school. And how, how they would respond if there was some sort of incident that occurred in that school. So, that's an ongoing goal. There's actually a lot of work that happened with that over the summer. So, we continue that collaboration with Carver Public Safety to maintain, implement ALICE procedures. Provide informational assemblies and resources for students and families around the topics of social media, bullying, and inclusion. So, that's a specific goal for this year that we want to do. We've gotten away from some of that programming since COVID's happened. And I know as a committee and as a community, we've had some of those discussions around bullying and issues on social media with students. So, we want to provide some resources, some education for students and families around those topics. Actually, today, I want to highlight that I sent something out that the US District Attorney's Office in Massachusetts is actually running a virtual internet safety night. And they're going to actually have speakers from across the country. And so, I sent that flyer out to the community today. We'd encourage people to participate in it. Think about how you can work with your own kids in terms of managing how they're accessing social media through their phones, through games, through all those ways in which they can do that. You know, so that's the type of programming. That's an example. Now, obviously, we're not running this one. This one's sponsored at the state level. It's a virtual. But it's virtual and anyone can attend in Massachusetts. So, I'd encourage families to sign up and join and be there. I believe it's next Tuesday, the 20th. And as I said, I sent out a flyer and an email to everyone today about it. But we're gonna, we also are going to bring some of that programming in here. So, we're working with Mark, the Massachusetts progression reduction center, to do a presentation around bullying for students and a parent evening. And we're going to keep working that throughout the year. Obviously, you implemented a new building schedule at the middle high school, including the moonblock. That's starting, that's in the process of happening. And then something that's related directly to the school committee, create a student advisory council to provide students a voice on building community-based issues. So, we're in the process on that. Mrs. Cabral actually has had a good number of students volunteer, and they're interested in participating. I can give the community a little bit more information about that later on. So, I think we're going to be in place to have that committee in place and have a student advisory person at our meeting on October 3rd. So, we're moving in that direction. We have to have, set up a. So we're moving in that direction. We have to have, set up a subcommittee meeting, I'll talk to the subcommittee about that. So, you know, though, all those, all those initiatives go around that concept of physical and social safety. You know, obviously, the ALICE is the physical piece, the internet safety is the social emotional piece. Even establishing the wind block is all about, having students feel connected and related to their school. And so there's a lot of work happening around this concept of supporting safe schools. So those are kind of the highlights there of changes in the initiatives. In terms of engaging the community. The biggest one I highlight here, because, is market and celebrate the work of the Cover Public Schools. So we're taking that on as a focus. We're beginning that process and talking about how we're going to market the schools. We have meetings setting, we have meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks at each building to talk about how the flow of information is going to occur from teacher to administration to the website to social media, and how that flow is going to happen. So like I said, we're in the infancy on, infancy on this piece, but we're having it be a focus area for this year. And we're going to see more and more of that to come over the next few weeks. And then obviously, this is actually a repeat one, but I wanted to highlight it, is develop and annualize events that encourage school pride amongst students, faculty, and families. We're always looking to do more and get back into doing events. You know, COVID's kind of shut some of that stuff down, and at the end of last year, we started to bring some of that stuff back. We want to keep moving in that direction. And just as a point, we're going to have a more formalized presentation about this on October third. That says, continue the development and implementation of substance abuse and mental health programs. So we have been notified that we've actually received from the federal government the Drug-Free Communities Grant. So we don't have, we're still waiting on specific details on that, but we have been officially notified, and we're hoping that on October third, we'll have a more formalized presentation. The big picture item of that is that grant will allow us to support a position in the district that will focus on that community work around substance abuse and mental health programs. So I think that's going to be an outstanding addition. So that was a teaser. More, more information to come.
Excellent, that's great.
In terms of engaging the community.
Scott, we still have the Cover Cares program going, right?
So we do, we do have Cover Cares, and actually, Cover Cares is hosting their regional candlelight vigil next Wednesday, the twenty-first, at seven o'clock. There's going to be some resource available at six o'clock. This year, it's at the Middleborough Town Hall, because that, the Cover Cares group works in coordination with a group called Middleborough Matters, a group in Wareham, a group in Plymouth, so it's the four communities work together. So Middleborough's hosting the vigil. But what will happen is, the Cover, the leader of Cover Cares and the person that we're able to hire for the Drug-Free Communities Grant will collaborate and work together in terms of pushing out these initiatives in support of, you know, working on addressing the substance abuse issue and developing mental health programs in the community, really, beyond, beyond the Cover Public Schools.
That's awesome.
That is excellent. Will that hire take place for this year?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So we have, we have to wait to receive, I look at, we have to wait to receive the federal funding. The money hasn't actually come into this yet, but once it happens, we'll be posting a position. Because that's actually a requirement, requirement of the grant, is that we hire someone to facilitate this work within the community of Cover.
Excellent, thank you.
Under enhancing teaching and learning, some of the areas I'll highlight here, which are from, like I said, from the school improvement plan and are actually different in terms of what was on the educational blueprint before for initiatives. Provide professional learning, reflect, reflecting on faculty and staff feedback, and students' need to include respecting differences in regards to culture, family, gender, abilities, et cetera. You know, in terms of us being an accepting community for all students. A focus that we've talked about a little bit at the community level is utilize student-centered instruction to increase student engagement and promote deeper learning through such projects as PBL, project-based learning. So we're in our second year of our project-based learning initiative at the middle high school. We had a cohort of teachers who were trained last year. Meredith, fifteen last year? Eighteen total, but that included. The administrative team.
Right, so with administrators, I think we were at twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay.
Yeah, and then this year, it was fifteen plus three administrators.
So, you know, we're over thirty teachers who've been trained in PBL, and we're looking to carry that initiative out. And one of the things we're looking to do in the spring is do a, sort of like we did with the MET showcase, but on a broader level, and kind of do a showcase that highlights both our pathways programs and some of the work that's been happening in project-based learning, PBL, and do like a PBL pathways showing, showcase night for the community in the spring. So we're building, building towards that. Obviously, continue the development of pathways programs to ensure college and career readiness. And a new item on here is create the Cover Middle High School vision of a graduate. That's part of the NEAS process. We have a lot of foreshadowing type of things to come. So actually, probably at our next meeting, I think we have a plan for October third, we're going to, we have officially received our NEAS reports. So Christine, I'll be doing a presentation on some of the findings and priority areas for growth in our, through our NEAS report. And one of them is to develop this concept of a vision of a graduate. We'll talk a little bit more, more about that in our October third meeting. And the middle high schools will be engaging that process of, what do we want? What skills, abilities do we want students who graduate from Cover Middle High School to have? What do we want our graduates to look like? So that falls under enhancing teaching and learning. And then finally, under leveraging leadership policy and funding, two new items here, the second, second and third one, identify and select professional development based on school-wide learning targets. And then work we have been doing, but it actually wasn't spelled out this way in the, in the blueprint, and it's going to work, we're going to continue to do, is seek and obtain grants and evaluate the impact on teacher and student growth. So Meredith's done a great job over the last year or two getting grants for us in regards to pathways. Ron actually did a lot, a lot of work on the Drug-Free Communities Grant with the Cover Cares Coalition, is the active that kind of took the lead there. So as a district, we're always seeking out as many grant opportunities as we can. And then we have to evaluate how we're taking this money and what we're doing with it, and what's it doing to best serve the interests of our students. So that's kind of a summary of the changes to the educational blueprint. And I guess I'm just looking for, obviously, I'll open up to any questions, and then we'll be looking for a vote and a motion to approve the blueprint as presented this evening.
Excellent.
I'll, I'll move to approve the revisions to the educational blueprint as presented this evening.
I'll second.
Excellent. I want to just say thank you for all of the effort that was put into updating this and, you know, moving it forward. And like you'd mentioned, there are a lot of, there's a lot of synergy between what the school committee is, you know, looking, looking forward to accomplishing and seeing our district accomplish over the next, well, this school year, which we're already in. But thank you for updating that. I think it's really important for that to be reflected in our classrooms throughout our district so people can be reminded of, you know, we're all, we're all on the same mission, right? We're all here for one, one common goal. So thank you for that initiative, anyway. Anyone have any comments or any questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Again, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
So that brings us to superintendent goals.
Okay, so general superintendent goals. This, this year, I'm in my second year of a two-year self-directed growth plan in regards to my evaluation system. And, you know, I could either maintain my goals over that two-year plan or revise them or change them. So I have some, some things here that are revised, some that are similar. And then ultimately, you know, my full evaluation would take place in April, and we talked about this, you're having an evaluation subcommittee, and it will go through that process. So I have three goals that I'd like to present to you tonight for your approval for this upcoming year. And as a superintendent, I do have to establish a professional practice goal, a district improvement goal, and a student learning goal. So I'll quickly touch on each of the three. Okay, the professional practice goal ties right to this whole concept of marketing the school districts. So, uh, marketing the school district. In order to foster positive and strong relations with the community, I'll work with the director of marketing and communications, the administrative leadership team, and teachers to effectively market and celebrate the Cover Public Schools in the community as measured by a review of the range of communications that happen throughout the year. And in terms of the educational blueprint, this ties to engaging the community. I don't know if you want to take them one goal at a time, or if we want to just do all three and then take questions.
What does everyone think? One at a time question, so, okay?
And the second one, in order to ensure that meeting progress is made on critical district and school goals, I'll work with the principal and other district leaders on effective implementation of the educator evaluation process for all staff. And the reason why I chose this as a goal, I wanted to talk about this a little bit, is that the reality is COVID shifted us away from the educator evaluation system a little bit. For new members of the committee or members who are here, if you remember, when the first year of COVID, there was actually an agreement that we didn't, we didn't even do the evaluation system. So the evaluation was shut down in mutual agreement with the EAPC during that whole year. And there were no educator evaluations that were taking place. And that was actually pretty, it wasn't like we were the only district, community that did that in Cover. That pretty much happened across the state where there just was no evaluation process. Last year, it was back in full force, but I think there were just so many things going on last year. Because you can really think, I know some of you remember, you know, this time last year, our meetings were still about asks and, and the struggles of being back in school and integrating students back into school. And that was just a huge focus for people, and it took a lot of mental energy. So, you know, a lot of people have asked me, how is the opening of school gone this year? And my answer has been a lot better than the last two years. And, and obviously, so I just felt like, and as an administrative team, we've talked about this, we kind of have to go back to pre-COVID in terms of our focus on the evaluation system for all employees within the district. And that isn't to, I don't want people to interpret that as people were failing or things weren't happening right, or it just lost focus in the last two years. And I think it's important for us to re, re-engage that focus. So I established that for a goal myself. You know, I don't actually contractually, I don't evaluate any of the teachers. I only evaluate the administrative team. But obviously, working with the administrative team who does evaluate teachers, we're going to put some of our focused work as a team on, on the evaluation process over this school year. So that, that's why I wanted to give a little context for why I selected that as a goal. And the third one, this is a continuation from last year. And it's been shifted a little bit, because I don't look at the data. I want to be able to give you some data for April. So in order to have seventy percent of students to be able to exceed their individual growth targets established by the spring of twenty-two assessment of the MAP assessment, the NWA. During the winter assessment, I'll work with the administrative leadership team and teachers to analyze the data from the fall assessment to identify students' areas of weakness and modify instruction to support student growth as measured by the spring MAP assessment. So I'm going to try to actually give you some data in April, saying, over the two years, how has our growth been? What does it look like? What steps have we taken? What, you know, what things have we put in place to support teachers in terms of using this data? Because if we're giving this assessment on a regular basis, how are we doing the best job we can in using that data to actually change instruction and improve student outcomes? Because that really has to be the focus. So this is kind of a continuation of a goal that was already in place. So that's kind of my summary of the three goals, and I'll take any questions, and hopefully, a motion to support the goals.
Does anyone have any questions?
So on the student learning goal. I just want to clarify, so the way that we're going to measure that is by using the assessments that were done this past spring?
I'm saying I'm going to look spring, and I think I actually said it wrong here, it really should be winter. So it's this past spring to this upcoming winter. Because I actually, I'm looking at it, so it's a modified sports circle that's measured by the spring MAP assessment. We don't want to do the spring one because the spring one is the one that's in May and June after we've done the evaluation process.
Right, that's why I was like, wanted to clarify.
And so it really, the final target should be the winter assessment. And looking at it longitudinally. I mean, I might give you a couple of data points of, what's it been over two years? From winter to winter, and then from this past spring to winter, and be able to look at that data. And then so, so when we actually go through the evaluation process, we'll have real data to look at it in terms of student growth and how many students met their individual growth target. So if you remember from the MAP assessment, it actually identifies for each individual student a growth target. And so the measure we're going to be using is how many of those students actually reached their growth target. So it's not going to be looking at necessarily overall scores compared to national norms or national averages. It's looking at individual students and how did they grow. I think seventy's an aggressive number, but I don't know what the right number is. So I said, if we're going to put a number down, so we'll put a number down, and then we'll see, we'll see what it is. Also, with the goal of, you know, it would be great to have a hundred percent of students meet their growth target. But we're, we'll do the check-in and see where we are there. So as, as I read it, Jen, it didn't make sense to me either, so definitely, it should be measured by the winter MAP assessment.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Now, we're all on the same calendar. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion then to approve the superintendent goals as presented this evening.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. If there isn't any further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Scott, and thank you for the explanation. It's a lot of great things that are going to continue to happen. I think we're all looking forward to hearing about those things and not having to worry about safety protocols and COVID. So thank you for the focus.
Yes.
So, sorry, I was jumping around. So that brings us to the second reading of policies concerning enrollment.
So if you remember at our last meeting in August, we looked at four different policies concerning enrollment. And this was related to our TFM process, the Tiered Focus Monitoring Process. And in essence, these four policies have to be presented to, to DESI as part of that process. And if you remember, I said that we had actually looked at the MASC policies in these four areas. And I'd also sent them to DESI for review. And DESI had said, yes, these, the revisions you're proposing are consistent with the processes that should be in place. And so it actually looks at, if, as a quick summary, just a quick reminder, the homeless policy used to actually talk about homeless and foster care. And now they've recommended they actually break those two out. So there's a homeless student enrollment policy and then opportunities for children in foster care. There's a new piece, which is actually, it's recommended but not required, which is the military children. That's a situation we don't run into a lot. But we figured that it is a recommended policy. It's not a requirement of TFM. But we said, we'll go with it. It's a new policy for us, so it's educational opportunities for military children. And then just a clarification on our admissions processes. So after our last meeting, there were no recommendations from the committee for revisions or changes. And again, these four policies are in line with what DESI is actually recommending in each of these areas. And I think we could approve them en masse tonight, if someone wanted to make a motion to do that.
Excellent.
I will move that we approve the following policies as presented. Policy JFABD, homeless student enrollment rights. Policy JFABE, educational opportunities for military children. Policy JFABF, educational opportunities for children in foster care, and Policy JF, school admissions.
I will second.
Anyone have any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you for bringing those forward and we will move to the first reading of policy AC, which is formerly policy GBEBA, non-discrimination policy, including prohibition against harassment and retaliation.
So we've been looking to revise and update our policies related to harassment, discrimination. We actually, as a district, have several policies related to these concepts. And we had a little concern that maybe they were outdated or contradictory. So, and because this issue, in terms of harassment, discrimination, obviously is very serious, but even beyond that, there's some real legal implications around these concepts. Then we actually brought these policies to the school district's attorney from Stolen Chandler Mill, Rebecca Bryant. And we sent to all of our policies. We sent us some recommendations from the Massachusetts, from MASC on these policies. And we said, what would be your And we said, what would be your recommendation? So what, what actually you see here tonight is a recommended revision to policy AC, which actually integrates the former GBEBA. Kind of takes those two policies and puts them together. And actually, also another policy, GBEBAE, which was the administrative guidelines for GBEBA. And we also had a policy called ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. So Rebecca's real feeling was that these policies kind of were scattered, sometimes may have been contradictory, were in different places. And she said it made sense to bring it all together under one umbrella, under one policy, which is, she's, which she has named, non-discrimination, including prohibition against harassment and retaliation. And so the recommendation tonight would be to, I'd possibly consider adopting this new policy, which we'll go through here. And then we'd eliminate those other policies because the ideas and concepts of those policies have now been integrated into that policy. So we'll be looking to eliminate GBEBA, harassment, eliminate GBEBAE, the administrative guidelines for the old harassment policy, and to eliminate ACA, which was called non-discrimination on the basis of sex. With all this falling under this new policy, which we're going to take a few minutes to go through and take a look at. So, in the first par, I can go through as much detail here as you want, or as little detail as you want. We can do a quick summary paragraph by paragraph. It probably wouldn't hurt to do that, it may be good for the community to hear it.
Yep, that would be great.
See it? So obviously, the first paragraph is just establishing your classifications. So it says that the Cal Poly Public Schools is committed to maintaining a school environment free from discrimination, harassment, retaliation, based on these classifications. Based on race, color, religion, national origin, age, sex, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, and homeless sta- homeless status. So it's identifying, these are the places where discrimination could possibly occur. Now, this next, all these next sections of the old AC are wiped out, and being revised by the new, the new policy. A, a key concept in the next paragraph is that this policy is, uh, all employees and all students are covered by this policy. So this policy isn't about students, it's not about employees, it's about everybody in the Cal Poly Public Schools. That everybody in the Cal Poly Public Schools has to follow this policy. And that's where it says, you know, all, all cover, all Cal Poly Public Schools requires all employees and students conduct themselves in an appropriate manner, with respect for their fellows, employees, students, and all members of the school community. You know, I won't read the whole policy, but that's the concept there. Then it gives you a very specific definition, why, I laughed because I just said, very specific, and the first sentence is, in general. The opposite of very specific. But, you know, it gives you a definition of harassment. So harassment may include, but is not limited to, any unwelcome written, verbal, physical, graphic, or electronic conduct that is based upon the characteristics named above, which was outlined in the beginning, and has the intent or effect of creating a hostile educational work environment by eliminating the ability of an individual to participate in or benefit from the district's programs or activities. So that whole concept of a hostile educational or hostile work environment for all, everyone in the Cal Poly Public Schools. If you're doing those things through written, verbal, physical, or graphic representations, then that's inappropriate. By law, we always want to say that by law, the particular communication or conduct is viewed from the perspective of a reasonable person. So, the harassment policy is based on the reasonable person's standard. Is would the reasonable person be offended by that comment, by that joke, by that inappropriate action? And that's the standard which will be employed. It also goes on to define sexual harassment. While harassment based upon each of the above characteristics is prohibited, sexual harassment requires particular attention. Generally, sexual harassment includes sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, and/or other verbal or physical conduct of a sexual nature. When acceptance or submission to such conduct is made either explicitly or implicitly a term or condition of employment or education, the individual's response to such conduct is used the basis for employment decisions and affect an employee as a basis for educational discipline or other decisions affecting students. So that whole concept of, see that parallel here, it's all students and employees. So how, how does it affect employees, how does it affect students? Such conduct interferes with individuals' job duties, education, or participation in extracurricular activities. And again, that conduct creates an imitating hostile or offensive work environment. You know, so the policy specifically calls out sexual harassment, which is covered by Title IX. I'm not going to read you the whole Title IX section here. But ultimately, the Office of Superior Rights has redefined how Title IX is to be implemented and investigated in Cal Poly Public Schools. They've established new guidelines, but I shouldn't say that, that was in public schools. Not, not Cal Poly Public Schools, in all public, in all public schools, and actually all public colleges and universities as well, across the country. And, so this is going to cover a little bit about the process for how we have to manage anything that is determined to be sexual harassment as a Title IX incident. And who that information needs to be reported to, and, and how we're to react. So, obviously, there's a focus here on reporting harassment. All students, employees, all individuals who believe they've been harassed or otherwise discriminated against in violation of this policy should report their concern promptly to the school principal. If the individual does not wish to discuss it with the principal, or the principal does not address the problem, the individual should inform the Title IX coordinator, which in our district is Melissa Leary, the Director of Special Education, and/or the superintendent. So we're saying, you know, any, any situation of harassment, sexual or otherwise, needs to be reported to the principal. We want to hear from people. We want to hear from anybody who feels like they've been put in a tough situation or being harassed by somebody. The other key point in here is, in terms of reporting, is it's actually like a mandated reporter piece. It basically states that if a, a member of the school community becomes aware of harassment or believes that harassment is occurring, it is, they are responsible or required to report that to the administration. Such conduct, so it's, so if anybody, if you see something, say something. If you become aware of the situation as an employee in the Cal Poly Public Schools, the expectation is you are going to report it to the administration. The Cal Poly Public Schools will promptly investigate every complaint of harassment. If it determines that harassment has occurred, they'll take appropriate action to end the harassment, ensure it's not repeated, and to its remedy, and to remedy its effects. So, one of the pieces of the Title IX, the new code for implementation of Title IX, is the concept of, we're supposed to be putting in supportive measures. So once harassment is reported to us, and from our perspective, Title IX is specific to sexual harassment, but really any type of harassment, well, the first question now that we've trained the administrators to ask themselves is, what supportive measures have to be put in place? What can we do to support the person who's making the allegation of harassment? Whether that's counseling, whether that's separating students, separating students and employees if that type of situation arose. And part of that process is to actually meet with the family, or the employee, or the student, and ask them that question. What, what can we do to support you? And really, that's almost now the first step in the process, is that concept of providing supportive measures. And I tie it here because it talks about, to ensure it's not repeated and to remedy its effects. So there's a focus on, once that harassment occurs, what are we doing? Both to ensure it's not repeated, and to also support the person who feels they've been harassed. And that really has become a focus of our processes in terms of implementing Title IX for sexual harassment, but just for harassment in general. Persons who've engaged in harassment or retaliation may be subject to disciplinary action, including but not limited to reprimand, suspension, termination, expulsion, or other sanctions determined by the school administration, and/or school committee, subject to applicable procedural requirements. And then, all allegations of sexual harassment that are, that reasonably may be viewed as meeting applicable definitions of the Title IX, will be responded in accordance with the district's Title IX grievance procedures. They told you Title IX has very specific procedures that OCR has put in place. And it must be reported to the building principal or the Title IX coordinator. Closure of a complaint, when an investigation is completed, school personnel will inform the complaint to the results and file a report. With and or, so I think this is actually a mistake. I think it's supposed to be with the Title IX coordinator and/or the superintendent. So I think we're missing the words, with the Title IX coordinator. And/or the superintendent. And then, just then it kind of identifies who these people are, Title IX coordinator is Melissa Leary, where she can be reached. We talked to Rebecca about this a little bit, you know, obviously, I'm, I'm the Title VI coordinator and the superintendent. And Title VI is Superior Rights, and I'm also the 504 coordinator. You know, we talked to Rebecca about putting specific names in, and she said you can certainly do that, and that as people change, you can update the policy without necessarily going through a first and second reading of the school committee. It does have to be brought back to the school committee to change the names of those titles within the policy. So her recommendation was to actually put the current names in the policy. Because the thought process is, one of the thought processes, kind of trying to streamline this document, I know it's still a little long and it's a little heavy, but part of the process of trying to streamline this into one document is this is actually, we want to make this publicly available, we also want to give it to staff. So this would be a document that would be in student and staff's, staff handbook, that would be given to them each year to be reviewed and say, hey, take a look at the harassment policy in regards to both Title IX, sexual harassment, and regular harassment and discrimination. So it might be something simpler to give people. And, that, that's kind of the end of the summary. So it was brought, this was brought before the policy subcommittee. Their recommendation, actually, I believe, and Stephanie and Jen, you were here for all this, you can certainly chime in, was to waive the second reading and implement the policy tonight. Obviously, that would have to be with the adjustment, the addendum of, we just found that mistake. With file the, with the Title IX coordinator and/or the superintendent under closure of a complaint. And and then Jen and Stephanie, anything else you want to add?
I would just say, you know, our, our previous policies were really archaic. They did not cover all protected classes that are, could be subject to discrimination or harassment. And given that the school year has already started, we felt that it was both prudent and responsible. I'm, I'm not meaning to speak through Stephanie, but I felt it was prudent and responsible to waive the second reading and to vote this tonight, you know, because all of these classes, you know, legally obligated. And so because of the legal ramifications, we just felt it was really important that we have an updated. And while this is long, this is so much more concise. I mean, we looked at all of the old policies as well, and they were all over the place. And they were all, like, multiple pages long, like it was nobody would go to them to try to like, like, this is so much better. Like Rebecca did a really great job pulling this together.
Yeah, this is definitely more clear and more concise. And clearly, I think all of us would agree as a committee that we want to, you know, empower our district, right, to have the policies in place so that if there is an opportunity or, you know, a situation where this needs to be enforced, that the policy is actually in place. So I appreciate all of the efforts that were put into this. And I mean, we talked about this for, for quite some time, so it is much more concise, much clearer, I think it will be much easier for everyone to understand what the process is with this consolidated policy, so.
And just as, if the committee did decide to go forward with implementing this policy this evening, it would also predicate that you should eliminate those other three policies.
Correct.
You can put it all into one motion, but there should always be a motion to eliminate GBEBA, GBEBA, et cetera. And, and then those three policies would come out of the policy manual, and this one policy would go in its place.
I, I'm confident with the revisions and appreciate all the work everyone put into it. So I would move that we waive the second reading and adopt policy AC, non-discrimination policy, including prohibition against harassment and retaliation, as presented this evening, while also eliminating the following policies. GBEBA harassment policy, GBEBAE administrative guidelines, ACA, non-discrimination of the basis, on the basis of sex.
I will second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that brings us to our last item, which is the first reading of policy KHB Advertising. And I'm going to let Ron talk about this a little bit, if that's okay, Ron?
Excellent, thank you, Ron.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. So, I'll be brief in your time and just give you a little bit of context for why I've got this in front of you. The policy was originally approved by the committee, I want to say 2019, is what the backup had there. And it was right before pandemic, right? We sort of have this line of demarcation in our lives, pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. This is a pre-pandemic one, with the intention of two-fold. One, engage our community more, engaging some of the local businesses and our schools, and bringing a little bit of revenue to help support kids in the programs that we offer, all the great stuff we've heard about earlier today. And so, as Scott mentioned with his presentation on the educational blueprint, you know, our emphasis in all of our, our departments is to try to help engage on that blueprint. And one thing that I'd be able to grab on to with lots of support from Gina and from Ms. Uneed, is to try to support ways to build up and marketing with our committee, right? And this is one component there. So, what you see here in front of you are just a couple of edits that I've proposed, now that we've started to engage with a few local companies in exploring whether or not they want to advertise with our schools and what that look like. So what we've got in front of you here is adjustments primarily to the mechanism by which fees are charged. And in your backup, you also have a copy of the process form, which just shows you what a, you know, local company would see, an itemized list of how this all breaks down. Your prior policy outlined that the advertiser would work with the business administrator on the design, and we wanted to firm up the language to say, we approve the design, but we're not going to work with you on your design. That's your design, it's your company, I'm not going to give you guidance or feedback on, does your design look good, or is this going to attract the right people at your business? We don't want to get involved in that business. They work with the design, we can fill in with a local sign company that we use, we have consistency with materials, and consistency with delivery and those sorts of things, but they start out with a design. The other component that is a proposed change that you see here is the fee structure itself. Your original language itemized that fees would be assessed by season, with the implication that someone could buy one sign, and that we would move it from place to place as seasons went on. And on a small scale, that could be feasible, but larger scale, that's just not something I think you want to have your, your staff putting their energy and time into. It also puts that situations in which, if there's a, a time where we missed moving the sign, now we're liable for something that you paid for that we didn't move in time, like, there's just an opportunity for error there that we want to eliminate. So what you see here for the proposed adjustment is simply, one, by sign location, you can purchase a sign. We'll ensure that the sign meets those requirements that the board has already approved. Once it meets those requirements, the sign is purchased, packaged altogether with both the fee and the cost of the sign itself. We affix it to the location, you see the locations there that are fee-scheduled, and that's the for of this fiscal year. That is a non-prorated, flat fee, so there's no question of like, well, it came on this day, how many days off do I get? You can work with folks before the fiscal year begins, so it's ready for the fiscal year. But if they have a sign ready to go in September versus July, that is the fee for the turf of the high school gym, et cetera, et cetera. So the intention there of the fee structure is just to maybe tidy it up a little bit, firm up the bright lines on the process as well. And hopefully, make this a pretty user-friendly process and policy for community businesses who might be interested in advertising with the Cal Poly Public Schools. There's probably more information you could know about all of this advertising, but I'll go ahead and make questions.
We also put in the background just the draft of the, the actual advertising form that businesses would fill out. So if people took a look at that, I just pulled it up here too. I don't know if there's anything you want to say about that in particular?
Um, I would say, it's not necessarily part of the policy, that'd be something that we, you know, could change as processes adjust, but we built this with input from a couple of businesses we've already started talking with. Some of whom are going forward, some of whom aren't ready yet. Just as a way to help them, you know, see our process, the kind of information that we need, and also just to itemize costs. So to be clear that there's a fee for utilizing these public spaces for advertising. And that's separate from the cost of a sign itself. Now, they own the signs, they're signed, if they don't want to advertise after a year, they're signed. Now, they own the signs, they're signed, if they don't wanna advertise after a year, if they're signed, they can take it down and put it wherever else they'd like to, obviously. Um but the, the fees are separate and ultimately rolled together, advertising, fee of sign, put together on the cost.
Great.
How did we come up with the annual fees for, based on location? Cause I know those changed from the previous policy.
Yeah, I tried to back into your original fee schedule. Uh so for example, when you look at the previous fee schedule, and you see your two turf field times, which are predominantly all in spring. Although I realize into the winter sometimes, we have folks that are using the field. Uh that's five hundred, five hundred, rolled up to just using the stadium, there's a thousand dollars. Uh the same is true, you see for the winter, which was the high school gym, and the previous language had five hundred, and so high school gym says five hundred. Your other two gyms weren't on there, so I included those as well, to just emulate the middle school gym. Those could be adjusted as we, you know, continue on here, so if we live this for a year or two and we find that uh they're too low or too high. Come back to you and say, hey, we've lived this for a little bit, had lots of feedback from vendors, and we propose X, Y, and Z adjustment to this policy. We don't have a ton of data yet, we've only had a couple of folks sort of have that conversation initially. Well, hopefully they'll start to reach out to more community businesses and engage with them. Before we did that, Ron, type in the policy.
One of our other questions, um as we were talking about this in the policy subcommittee meeting was, um can someone purchase more than one sign?
Yes, so.
To, to build a bigger sign?
Oh, can they like buy a couple of signs?
Yes, yes.
The short answer is, um yes, you just have to pay the fee again, right? So it's the first sign for the location. Um and we'd be happy to support you of that, right? And the same is, to be clear, the same would be true if you had, let's say you wanna do the stadium and the middle school gym. It would be two signs, you'd have two signs accordingly to that.
Now, would they, you know, outside around the stadium, would they be, you know, in the grass, or they be on the fence, or?
Yeah, and I made some calls over to col, just a few colleagues. Anecdotally, I don't have a dataset here for you or a graph here for you, but just to talk to a few folks who do some advertising. The large majority do it on the outside, and the large majority of businesses that other districts work with locally. Want it on those outside spaces because you get a lot of traffic there, both for your community, but also for like, you know, recreational stuff comes through. And they wanna use those spaces, and that's folks from out of town who may come by and say, oh, I know this Carver company does whatever it might do, and give them a ring.
Okay, so I have something that I just thought of now that I didn't think of. Um if we have any um town organizations or any nonprofits that want to purchase a sign, it would be this, just the same fee schedule?
Advertising, we'd be advertising the way the policy is, right?
That just popped into my head, so I just thought I would ask. So anyway, thank you for um your effort in putting this together and, and updating it. I know we have, um I would assume we're gonna have a lot of people be interested in that, we're gonna be seeing signs popping up across the district. So I'm, I'm excited to see even more um engagement with the community.
I would tip your expectation on the number of advertising times you get. We're a relatively small community with a relatively small commercial base. Uh I would, I say that a little bit from experience, sometimes there's a lot of excitement about these policies. And there's this um anticipation of this big revenue stream.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know.
My inclination is you're gonna get maybe a thousand bucks or two every year or so, which is great and it's good, but it's not gonna augment your budget necessarily. It's nice to have good community builder engaging with our local businesses, and a little bit of revenue on the side to help with some small projects for, for kids.
But so for, a business doesn't have to be based in Carver to advertise with this stuff.
No, absolutely not. They just have to meet those expectations of what the advertising.
Right, I think there's a lot of potential there.
And so also, um I'll just add, when this came in front of the policy subcommittee, um we thought that this might also be prudent to waive a second reading of. So that if Ron does have somebody interested in purchasing a sign, they're not being held up to our next meeting to finalize the fee structure and move forward.
I would offer you just this caveat and defer to your guidance on it. I've got one company that's just about done at this point, and I've just been using your existing language as such. And unless you have reservations, I would simply grant that, I'm in the existing language, given that, at least for this year. Everything was built and agreed upon under your current language. You go through this year, they wanna continue to advertise, and this is gonna prove, they now advertise with this new structure. As long as that, I'd really transparent with you about that, rather than throwing them the curveball halfway through their process. And by the way, the rule has changed, now it's this other.
Yeah, I think it's fine to grant, or, you know, give them the option, I don't, cause inside, like if they were looking at a season past, they could. Potentially save money, which isn't necessarily in our benefit, I guess, cause we'd be losing money, but, um so yeah, I don't know how we wanna approach that.
My recommendation would be to simply maintain the policy language that we use with them to get the process started. Just so that they knew what they were getting into, and there's no curveballs, clear that for anybody.
Okay.
And they're starting to do this with you or anybody else new, we'll use this.
That makes sense, thank you.
So you would recommend that we not put this into place until?
I would recommend if you're comfortable with passing it, as soon as you're comfortable passing it, I will take care of the rest for you.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Does anybody else have any thoughts?
Great.
So would you guys want to waive the second reading, or do you think we should bring it back at our next meeting?
Is, is everyone okay with that? We just thought if this is something that we can implement now, then by all means. Right?
The only, the only thing I wanna make, and I'm not opposed to doing, waiving the first reading. Uh that's why I guess mention to the committee, cause we've done this a couple of times, and we've talked about this. Is all, I was giving the concept behind two readings of a policy. Is the concept behind two readings of policy is that this is the first time the change is being presented to the public. And it gives the opportunity for the public to say, oh, I've heard they're going to change this policy. So I'm gonna come back to their next meeting and say, I have concerns about this policy changer. And then that's why they, that's why, that's why the concept of the two readings exists. Uh I'm not worried about that here, I think it's fine, I don't think this everybody's gonna be coming to say next week, saying, I really don't wanna do that. Uh they really shouldn't be doing that uh pol, that uh advertising policy. But I guess I just wanna caution the committee in terms of long-term thinking, in terms of the purpose of having two readings. Is to give the community the opportunity to weigh in prior to the second reading.
Absolutely.
I would just add, there's no urgency from my office's perspective on this one or the next one.
Okay.
Not thinking of the urgency there.
Okay, I mean, I'd rather move it forward, um so I'd propose that we move, that we waive the second reading and adopt the policy. K H B advertising as presented this evening.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then if, if it's, if it's okay, I'd like to give everybody kind of an update on where we stand in terms of. I know at the last meeting we voted to revise the entire policy manual.
Yes.
Uh so we've begun to engage uh M A S C in doing that. Um and we have a policy subcommittee meeting set up uh for October. Uh and at that policy subcommittee meeting, uh we'll be working with Jim Hardy from M A S C. And he reported to me that the, our first policy subcommittee will be all about developing a schedule. So he'll talk about the process, he'll actually have the first set of policies ready for us to look at. Uh and then we'll actually hammer out a schedule, and my thought is the meeting after that will bring the schedule and say. Here's the plan going forward of how we're gonna uh go through the policy manual and the length of time that that's gonna take us. But I wanna let the community know that uh that work, that work has begun. Uh we'll be hearing more about that in the couple of next couple of weeks.
Awesome.
Yeah, just very exciting, it's gonna help us really move forward quickly and concisely. Okay, so.
The, the last agenda item of the request to recycle is actually, we determined it was unneeded.
Yeah.
Uh so we're pulling that item from the agenda. Uh the one we were looking to recycle, there's already been, uh we realized that the request to recycle had already been approved by the school committee last year in November. We just hadn't actually gone to recycling those materials yet.
They're still sitting there.
There's, well, not, they're, now, now we're ready to move, now we're ready to move on.
Excellent.
Very good.
Right, okay, so that brings us to reports from the school committee. Anyone?
Um I, well, I just wanna say that the start of a new ski, new school year has always been my favorite time of year. Um it's very exciting hearing the things that we have planned moving forward, and especially with my special ed um area of expertise. It was super exciting to hear about recognition from the Special Olympics, so I am over the moon. About that for Carver, so very excited for this coming year.
That is excellent.
I just wanted to say welcome to all the new teachers and congratulations to all the staff that um moved positions. And I'm very excited, it, I've heard nothing but great things so far this year. And I sense a palpable change in everybody's attitude. Maybe that's because COVID is gone and we're not talking about it anymore, but I definitely feel um uplifted about this school year. And I just wanna thank everybody for their hard work in making that happen.
I'll, I'll echo both of their sentiments. Um it's uh mostly has been a positive start to the school year, and so. Um thank you to everybody district-wide who worked hard to make that happen. From preparing the schools and getting them ready, to the buses rolling out, to teachers putting tons of effort into, you know. Prepping their classrooms and their lesson plan, administrators, making sure that everything was in place. Um fall sports are off to, you know, a good start, and that's always exciting. Sports means so much to so much of our athletes, and that's both at the town level and in the schools. Um so yeah, it's been a, it's been a great start, and um I just hope that this year will bring a lot of collaborating. I hope that um, you know, that there can just be a lot of educating in our community, and we can all um learn to come together.
Great.
I also would like to welcome all the new staff. And Dr. Stahl to her position as vice principal, all our new um administrative staff. And everyone who put together all the coordinating, you know, Ruby said it was, it's a detailed process, so that you were able to move so quickly. And it's actually very exciting to see all the interest in our community, cause can you imagine where we would be if we couldn't fill the positions? So I'm hoping we continue to, or these, you know, they continue to grow with our community, and um that we can retain great teachers. Um and administrators. Um I also wanna recognize that our community, together with South Shore Action for Hope, is going gold for childhood, uh going gold for hope. Um this month for childhood cancer awareness. Um I believe donations can be accepted at any time at the school, they should have a boot or something. Um Wednesday, you can purchase gear at the Purchase Street um football fields. And Thursday, they'll have gear at the open house at the middle high school. Uh cornhole on Saturday, tournament is a big fundraising, raffles. Just one, a lot of wonderful things going on. Uh we'll be wearing gold at the schools on nine twenty-three and lighting up the night on nine twenty-four. I'm happy to say that my daughter and our neighbors were able to pull together a lemonade stand last minute on Sunday. And raise two hundred and forty-five dollars for the cause, so it's pretty amazing just hearing stories and. Um people coming by and just, you know, really appreciating that these kids are, are doing something and, and understand what they're doing to. Um raise awareness and fundraising, so it's, it's nice to see.
Absolutely. Sorry, where did that go? I was, I just wanted to make sure I got the, the, the name right, but um I also just wanted to say congratulations to our district on um their recognition. Um for our, well, for their efforts with um Special Olympics and um inclusive athletics. I think it's so important on so many levels, and it's really great to see that um all the effort that has been put in in our district has been recognized on that level. So um thank you to everyone for that, and hopefully that spirit will continue into this year that we've begun. It's hard to believe that it's already September twelfth.
Yeah, that's crazy.
This year is just going by so fast, but I, I'd like to think that it's because um we're all busy doing fun and exciting things that we haven't been able to do. Um for a while, so I'd like to think that that's part of the contributing factors, that we all have so many things to look forward to. Um and I also wanna welcome all of our new um teachers and staff. Um congratulations to everyone that um decided to take a new career path this year, um and ex, and explore new opportunities. Uh thank you for your commitment um and desire to continue to grow within our district. We are very fortunate to have um the quality and level of educators and staff that we have. Um from the top all the way down. Everyone working together and everyone working towards that positivity. Um really has been palpable throughout the district so far, um from what I've been able to see and experience myself. So it's, it's very exciting to um start this year on, on this note, and let's hope we carry it all the way through um and going forward. So thank you to everyone. Again, I wanna ask people to please be patient with buses. I know there have been some, some things with buses, but please reach out to um transportation. Um and for those people on the road, I know it's frustrating to get stuck behind a school bus, but please don't pass them. I just saw someone do it in another community this afternoon. Um it's, just take the extra minute and just be patient, wait for everyone to get out of their bus safely, so. So thank you for that, and we will see everyone on October third. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, so we have a motion.
It's been a long first.
Right? We, we have a motion, we have a motion and we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everyone, until next time.